Ah, yeah, that's right. It's good. Glad to hear it.
They might be seeing my dirty shoes.
Well, they will come up here. They wouldn't come up.
You like reading all these resignations for these presentations?
Absolutely.
This is a terrific resignation. I read it. You're really good. That's right. I apologize for forgetting that.
Mayor at seven o'clock?
I would like to call to order the April 22 city council meeting for the city of Newport Beach and would ask for roll call.
The record will reflect that Councilmember Daigle has an excused absence.
Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, do we have a closed session report?
There are no reportable items this evening.
Thank you. I would like to ask Councilman Selidge to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance this evening, followed by Father Kelly Boyu in leading us in our invocation if you would remain standing after the pledge. Thank you.
Please follow me in the salute to our flag.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. O loving God, who has given us our lives and our world and every good thing in them. We gather in springtime, a time of new life and new hope in your loving care. We pray with gratitude tonight for your many blessings in the past, for your presence among us in this moment, and for your promise to lead us, guide us, and protect us in the future. Our lives are dear to you, important to you, and made in your image and likeness. Guide the deliberations of our city council and our city staff with your wisdom each week as they gather. May their efforts enhance the peace and well-being of our community with creativity and foresight for the future. May they listen equally to both their vocal supporters and to those who have no one else to turn to. May they find the solutions they seek to solve the problems we face with fairness, justice, and liberty for all. We ask this trusting in your infinite love for us, one God forever and ever. Amen.
We have four presentations to make this evening, and is Bridget Hood in the audience? Bridget, if you could come on down to the deus, and we have a proclamation for you that I would like to share at this point in time.
Thank you, Mayor Hill and city council members. I am deeply appreciative for you proclaiming April as Donate Life Month. As the ambassador of Newport Beach, I am here with Dr. Omegan and firefighter Chad, who's going to share a story as well. I am personally touched by organ donation. It was 27 years ago that I was diagnosed with lupus, and nine years ago, my kidneys began to fail. And it's truly a miracle that I'm alive today because of my amazing brother, who donated one of his kidneys to me. This past January, we celebrated our eight-year anniversary, and it's actually eight years is the average lifespan for a patient on dialysis. So, thank you again. I'm truly honored to be here and appreciate your time.
All right, thank you. Don't leave.
Okay.
Did you have someone else that wanted to offer some? Let's bring them up at this point in time.
Thank you. My name is Captain Chad Ponjolik for the Newport Beach Fire Department. Donate Life asked me to speak. It was 2008 where we lost firefighter Kevin Pryor. He came back from the wildland fires up north and passed away from a brain aneurysm. So, up until 2008, really, my only experience with Donate Life was putting my little pink sticker on my driver's license. So, obviously, you know, losing a brother in the fire department, that was a big, big emotional thing for us, and definitely without Donate Life, the team, I mean, they were there from the start to the finish. They were great, just watching them deal with the family and helping not only the fire department, but their family through, you know, a tragic time to actually make it a positive. You know, I don't, being a parent, I couldn't imagine having to deal with the decision that Kevin's parents had to make. So, and being with them in the room with the people from Donate Life, it was amazing how compassionate, and they walked him through this step by step. It was truly an amazing experience to be part of that. And with that firefighter Pryor, actually, he donated eight of his organs, and there, so he was able to help out, even in his death, help out eight other people. So, thank you for your time.
All right, thank you. Well, we're very pleased to present you with the proclamation and, in fact, declare that April 2014 is designated as MDMV Donate Life California Month, and I'll bring that proclamation down to give to you. Yes, ma'am?
I'm Dr. Omegan from Hoag Hospital, and I'm here to also be a member of this team, and thank you to your honor and members of the council for being here this evening. In the course of my work at Hoag Hospital as a critical care physician, I participate in the care for both donor patients and their families, and also those patients who have received the life-saving gift of an organ transplant. There are also many others whose life is changed for the better after eye and tissue transplantation. Transplantation may be seen as an established procedure in health care, but the circumstances surrounding the gift of organs, eye, and tissue is usually anything but routine. The loss of a family member or loved one is difficult. The generosity of the donor and their family members around the time of their loss is truly a gift to the individual and the wider community, and this requires recognition. Hoag, as a local community hospital, continues its leadership in the donation and donor recognition programs. The previous speakers have outlined organ donation from the perspective of a transplant recipient and donor family member. Statistics, though, speak to the need for organ, eye, and tissue donation on a national basis. There is one person added to the waiting list every 11 minutes, and 19 people die each day on the national waiting list, and others become too sick for transplantation. I would expect that most, if not all, in this room know of someone who has received an organ or tissue transplant. California has 18% of the national organ transplantation waitlist currently at over 122,000. The greater LA area has 36% of the California organ transplant waitlist, where our community members receive their treatment. Donor registration for persons 18 and over is 50% nationally. The California state registration rate is 36%, and that in the local community is closer to 25%. Community support and education for the donation process is essential to maintain the program for donation. I would urge all in this room to become further educated about organ, eye, and tissue donation, how to register as a donor, and inspire our families and local community to support this life-saving process. Thank you.
Thank you. If you three will head to the flags, I'll meet you there and present your proclamation. Julie, would you come on down? Relay for Life is a very important annual activity we have in this community, and Julie, I believe you have a small presentation for us.
I do. Thank you. iPad would turn on. First, on behalf of the American Cancer Society and Newport Beach Relay for Life Committee for 2014, I would like to thank you, the city council, for your support and for inviting me to speak briefly with you this evening. I want to ask a question. How many of you have been affected some way by cancer? Either you have been diagnosed, or someone in your family has been diagnosed, probably everybody in here. I would like all of you to invite all of you to participate in our Relay for Life event on May 31st, June 1st, at Newport Harbor High School. The American Cancer Society Relay for Life is a life-changing event, which brings people together to celebrate the lives of those who have battled cancer, remember loved ones lost, and empower individuals and communities to fight back against a disease that takes too much. Teams gather with tents and sleeping bags to camp out at Newport Harbor High School and take turns walking or running around the track. Because cancer never sleeps, relays are overnight events, and each team is asked to have a representative on the track at all times. Relay for Life gives us an opportunity to celebrate, remember, and fight back. We celebrate cancer survivors by inviting them to participate in the first lap, which is the survivor's lap. The luminaria ceremony is another highlight of the event. A luminaria is a small bag filled with sand containing a candle that makes it glow. Each luminaria bears the name of a person who has battled cancer. At dusk, we light all the candles along the path. They burn into the night, honoring and memorializing those who have faced cancer, lighting a path of hope. The event closes with the upbeat Fight Back Ceremony, which reminds us that we have the power to change the course of this disease. I would like to invite all of you to participate in our event, which is May 31st, starts at 9:00 AM through June 1st. As a cancer survivor, I was invited to come and participate in my first Relay for Life event so that I could walk the survivor's lap. It was such a moving experiment, experience, because I was surrounded with people who were all in the same club, a club that no one really wants to be in, but is a part of, because we all heard the words, "You have cancer." Just walking around the track, knowing that there were others there that experienced the same thing I had. Then I experienced the luminaria ceremony that evening, and that's when I found out that I was home. This was a community of hope. This was a community that got it. The whole day was full of joy and support, fun, and a learning opportunity to find out what the American Cancer Society does for those that are fighting cancer and to stop cancer. So, again, I would like to invite you to come, and I'm telling you the date so you get it really in your head. It's May 31st. It starts at 9:00 AM, and it goes until June 1st, which ends at 9:00 AM. It's a 24-hour event. It's at Newport Harbor High School, and you can go to www-relayforlife.org/newportbeachca, or you can see me, and I'll pass you a flyer, so if you can't remember that. Again, join us in the American Cancer Society, in the world's largest movement to end cancer. Help us finish the fight. Thank you again for your time and support.
Well, thank you, and as has been the history in the past, the city council will have its team there. Our chair is not with us this evening. She is out of state.
She has signed you up, council critters. You can support the council critters.
We would hope that everyone would support us to help us survive the exercise, and I believe the city has two additional teams as well.
Yes, this, so far, the city has, city, we're looking still to get the fire department and the police department involved.
Well, we'll try to twist some arms.
There you go. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We appreciate, appreciate you coming down and sharing that information with us. Our third presentation is part of a program with our fire department, and we're going to call upon Chief Polster for presentation. And I have a proclamation as well. You'd like me to present your proclamation first?
That proclamation would be great, please.
All right, thank you. Whereas California is a state emergence, is in a state of emergency with recent drought, and Newport Beach's long and dry months with no rain make our wildland areas vulnerable to severe wildfire conditions, and whereas Newport Beach is currently experiencing low humidity and dry periods, which has made the brush extremely dry and flammable, creating more dangerous fire conditions than usual, and whereas this year's Wildlife Awareness Week theme of Ready, Set, Go emphasizes the importance of hardening your home with fire-resistant building materials, assuring homeowners know it is their responsibility to maintain 100 feet of defensible space and being prepared with emergency supplies and evacuation routes, as some of the most important factors in protecting families and homes from wildfires. And whereas all Californians who live, work, and recreate in our city's wildlands must recognize the high risk of wildfires, and therefore should strive to be fire-safe and take every precaution to protect themselves, their property, community, and natural resources. And whereas Wildfire Awareness Week is a valuable opportunity for California's fire agencies, partners, and communities to reduce the risk of wildfire, increasing public safety and environmental health, now, therefore, I rush in, Mayor of the City of Newport Beach, on behalf of the entire Newport Beach City Council, hereby proclaim May 4th through May 10th as Wildfire Awareness Week in the city of Newport Beach, and I urge all citizens to support the governor's office and the California Office of Emergency Service, who designate May 4th through May 10th as Wildfire Awareness Week throughout the state.
Our agenda says wildlife awareness. I thought we were going to learn how to be nicer to coyotes or something.
Read the amended one.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for the proclamation, you, for Wildlife, or excuse me, Wildfire Prevention Week. I have wildlife written in mine as well. It's a real important week for us to prepare for wildfire this season. As you know, the drought has taken its toll on our vegetation, and the fire resources in this city and the surrounding cities are well-prepared to deal with whatever situation comes our way, and we anticipate a busy year, and thank you for recognizing the fire departments in Southern California for this week.
Are we closing any areas that normally would be open?
No, there is no plan for closing any areas, but that is an as-needed basis, and we will make those judgments as the year goes on, depending on the fuel moistures and the threat to our structures and our residents, and those decisions will be made later on, probably in a year.
All right, if you two gentlemen will join me at the flag, I'll formally give you your proclamation. All right, and we have one additional presentation, and I'm going to call upon the chief once again and assistant chief to share with us PulsePoint program rollout and installation of our new Civic Center automated external defibrillators.
Mr. Mayor, Scott Polster, your fire chief, council members, people in the audience and city staff. Newport Beach has always been a leader in providing health care through the fire department, and we now have the opportunity to share that health care with our citizens, residents, and visitors. PulsePoint is an application that's on your smartphone that signals you when there is somebody in or nearby that is having a cardiac arrest. So, therefore, if you are trained in CPR, you can assist that person at a moment's notice. The notification to your smartphone is in seconds. It comes from the fire dispatch center in Anaheim directly to your smartphone in a matter of seconds, so that if you're nearby, you can initiate CPR prior to the fire department getting there, prior to a person with an AED. Therefore, this system is going to save lives. It has throughout the United States, where it's been implemented, and it is live as a pilot project here in Newport Beach and some surrounding fire departments in this area, not in Orange County Fire Authority at this, at this point. I'm going to introduce my fire marshal, Assistant Chief Kevin Kitch, who is going to run you through a brief presentation of the AED program. This is a program that will definitely pay positive dividends to all of us here in the city.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I'm just going to provide a short presentation on sudden cardiac arrest and public access automatic external defibrillators, or commonly called AEDs. In the United States, we experience over 1,000 deaths per day due to what we call SCA, sudden cardiac arrest. It is a nationwide problem. It is a worldwide problem, and one of the things that we're doing today is defining what we can do to help intervene when these sudden cardiac arrests happen. And typically, what that is, is you have an electronic or electrical disruption of the heart conduction system, and this is where immediate CPR and defibrillation can make a significant difference in the outcome of these people that suffer these type of events. It's important to note that these are not heart attacks, sudden cardiac arrests, rather, it is something that can affect all age groups. This happens to children. It happens to middle-aged. It happens to elderly folks. And the important thing to know is time is of the essence. That is the mantra of emergency medical response, and now we have data to support it, and clearly, it's been demonstrated through a lot of studies that for every minute that passes without any treatment for somebody in SCA, their chances of surviving decreases by 10%. And that's a pretty significant statistic. So, this is why we want to encourage in any way possible bystander CPR and access to an AED, because if we can do that in a timely manner, we can markedly improve the survivability of these people that are afflicted with SCA. The data is there to support that. So, what are the things that have happened as of late? CPR. CPR today is easier to learn than ever before. The process or the procedure for CPR has been simplified. It is something that is easy to learn in a matter of minutes. It is something that is easily understood by sixth graders, fifth graders, fourth graders. AEDs, the external or the automated external defibrillators, which we have installed here at the Civic Center complex, is easy to learn as well, and that is a core competency of any CPR classes being offered today. So, CPR classes today mean, yes, you learn how to do cardiac compressions, but you also learn how to use an AED, because together, they form a rather powerful team in making a difference. So, what we have done this past week is we have installed four new AEDs located right here. We have one right here in council chambers. We have one right over across the room in the community center. We have one at City Hall, and we have one at the circulating desk on the first floor of our main library. But also note that this is not a new idea. We have had AEDs in the city for quite some time. We have had, we have three over at MOD in various locations. We have them located throughout several of our satellite recreation facilities, such as Oasis. AEDs have been carried on PD patrol units, park ranger patrol units, lifeguard units, and fire trucks for some time, and they have been used repeatedly throughout time. So, that's one of the key things that we are doing. But what I really want to stress today is the concept and idea of public access AED. This is where the rubber meets the road. The people that are closest to respond to be able to provide that CPR compressions, to provide the application of AED in a timely fashion while 911 is being activated and emergency services are responding, makes a difference. It drastically increases the chances of survivability for these patients. The data is in, it's not in dispute. So, what we're also talking about today, as Chief Polster talked about, is a program called PulsePoint, and this is where we're leveraging technology to make that citizen response to an incident faster, more seamless, and complete. And this is really, the exciting part about this, is that this is community helping community at its very basic level. So, PulsePoint literally will allow people to help you intervene and possibly save a life through a smartphone, where you have GPS location. And as Chief mentioned, the dispatchers will, if you sign up for this service, you can download the app at the Apple Store or Android stores. If you're in the immediate area where the location has been notified for a cardiac arrest in a public area, not under private residence, but in a public area, you'll be notified. And not only be notified, it will tell you where, it will tell you, it will actually give you mapping directions, and if there is an AED located, registered with a service, it will also tell you that there is an AED in the building or nearby. So, this is all the information that is truly needed to be able to intervene, community member to community member, to make a difference by providing life-saving CPR coupled with defibrillation, as indicated, with the automatic devices that will virtually perform that on their own, as long as that AED is transported to the patient and properly applied. That concludes my presentation.
Is there any questions?
Any questions of council?
You said that PulsePoint isn't available right yet?
It is available right now.
Oh, I thought you said it wasn't.
It is available, and we have been testing it. The pilot program has initiated. As a matter of fact, in the PulsePoint application, if you download it, it also provides you all the responses the fire department is on as well. We've included traffic collisions, medical aids on there, that you can see what your fire department is doing, but will alert you when there is a CPR patient within a proximity, you know, close proximity to where your phone is.
So, do you go to the city website, or do you just type in PulsePoint?
You can get it from the App Store. I just did. All set to do.
Okay.
Yeah. Altsman Hin. Johnson, Petros.
Thank you for that, and I just did download PulsePoint. There, I have two cards here. One, I believe everybody should have, and that is a CPR card. This is so easy to get and so valuable for us as a community to share. I really encourage everybody that's listening and that's here tonight, please go and get trained in CPR. It is simple, and it is life-saving. The other is my MI card, where my stint is located, because I needed... The other is my MI card, where my stint is located, because I needed CPR at one point in time. I suffered a cardiac event, and I'm still here as a result of that kind of fast treatment. The one thing that wasn't described here is the things that we individuals can do to try and prevent these types of events. Yes, they occur to everybody, or can occur to everybody, but exercise, good diet, and all of the other attendant lifestyle changes that we can make. I strongly encourage that. But please, Newport Beach family, get your CPR card.
Any further comment? All right, chief, thank you very much. Madam Clerk, notice to the public.
Notice to the public, the city provides a yellow sign-in card to assist in the preparation of the minutes. The completion of the card is not required in order to address the city council. If the optional sign-in card has been completed, it should be placed in the box provided at the podium. The city council of Newport Beach welcomes and encourages community participation. Public comments are generally limited to three minutes per person to allow everyone to speak. Written comments are encouraged as well. The city council has a discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items. As a courtesy, please turn cell phones off or set them in the silent mode. Now is the time for city council announcements or matters which council members would like placed on our future agenda.
Councilwoman Gardner.
For those of you interested in the cleanliness of the harbor, there is a group now called Help Your Harbor, which meets on the first Saturday of every month at 9:00 AM at the Balboa Bay Club guest dock. And from there, they go out and give you instructions on how to pick up trash in the bay. So whether you've got an electric boat, or you're paddling, or you're kayaking, this is an opportunity to give back a little bit to that great harbor that gives us so much pleasure. And then for the city manager, for a future agenda perhaps, to see if, to bring it back in the next meeting to see if the council will support it to be on the agenda, there's a group that is promoting a new type of water fountain that supports reusable water bottles to try to replace water, plastic water bottles, at no cost to the city. So I'd like to have us contemplate that. Thank you.
Councilman Petros.
I have nothing.
Councilman Selig.
No announcements?
Councilwoman Hinn.
Yes, I have several. I'd like to follow on to Councilmember Gardner's comment about this replaceable fountain. I've been sitting on an email to the city manager about exactly the same thing for about two days now, and I will send that. And I do support that, at least looking at that idea, so. I've had the great pleasure to attend two candidate forums for the 74th Assembly District race, and was very glad I did so. We have one of our colleagues on the dais here, Keith Curry, that's running for the 74th Assembly. And I'd have to say, with all due objectivity, he acquitted himself very, very well in those forums. Congratulations, Councilman Curry. I do want to encourage all the voters, however, to get smart about the 74th Assembly race. It's a real opportunity to send some leadership to Sacramento that I hope will help us here in Orange County. Then, as my, as my time is growing short here on council, I'll be termed out in November, I, I think a little more about some of the things that I've been able to participate in, large and small. A small one, just a week or so ago, where I attended a dedication of a totlot down on Peninsula Point, just a little pocket park there that was the brainchild of a couple of people in the Peninsula Point Association. And so we just gathered there for a little bit and took a couple pictures. It was four years in making to get that done, thanks to staff for their help and help to make that happen. But it's those kinds of little things that give you a lot of satisfaction in addition to some of the bigger decisions that we make. I also, in a little grander sense, had a wonderful time on Sunday, the 13th, attending the Newport Insonata Fiesta down in Balboa Village. It was really a great event, very well attended, with the chalk art and a live band and lots of people running around, having a good time. And so I was very, very pleased with how that event turned out. And I'd like to make sure to invite everyone to attend the race kickoff, which is on Friday, the 24th, this coming Friday, at Balboa Pier. That's the best place to do it. All the boats are gathered. The first start takes place at 11:00 AM. It's really exciting. There's a huge number of boats. And when they're all vying to cross the line at the same time, or first, I should say, it's really exciting to watch, and very beautiful, actually. So please come on down to Balboa Village to watch that race kickoff. And then, council member, excuse me, well, along with two other council members, we were, I was able to attend a meeting of the Southern California Edison staff dealing with infrastructure decisions here in Newport Beach. And we had a very good discussion with them, much more information and detail about what Southern California Edison is doing to improve reliability in the city. They've got a lot of projects going on and that are of some importance. And I just have to say, it's nice that we're getting a good response from Edison, from some of the prodding that Mayor Hill and Councilmember Petros and others and I have been pushing for. And I think we do have their attention. I think it will make a difference. They're doing some pilot programs right now in Newport Beach in response to some of the questions that we've had. And then I'd also like to announce that there is a meeting of the Tidlins Management Committee that will be tomorrow, Wednesday, the 23rd. It'll be here in the Civic Center, right across the aisle here. And at that meeting, we'll be dealing with several items of significance, including the conceptual review of Lower Castaways Park changes. We'll be talking again about the draft seawall policy and a discussion, continuing our discussion of the Balboa Island bulkheads, possibly the direct, the derelict vessel situation and others. So that should be a good meeting. And then we have a meeting of the Finance Committee on Tuesday, April the 29th. That'll be in our city offices here, I believe, Conference Room 2E. And we've got a very full agenda for that meeting as well. Let me just have a quick look at that. We'll be looking at the, we'll get a first look at the proposed budget for 2014-15 at that meeting. We'll be having another look at our facilities financing plan. That's the one that helps us understand financial impacts for replacement and building of key city facilities. We'll be looking at the council policy on reserves, and we'll get a first look at our quarterly financial review and get an update on our new ERP, that is our Enterprise Resource Planning Computer System that we're involved with implementing. So please come on in for that Finance Committee meeting. And that's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Curry. I'm sorry. Councilman Curry?
Thank you. First of all, thank you for those, those kind words. I appreciate that. As long as we're recycling the bottles and not the actual, or reusing the bottles and not the actual water itself, I'm all for that, for that idea. Let me also make mention the fact that I was able to join Councilmember Hinn at the Taste of Balboa, and I was really impressed by the quality of restaurants that have come into the Balboa Village area, that were on full display there, and all of the activities for families and kids. It's really changing the neighborhood. And Councilmember Hinn, you deserve a lot of credit for the transformation of that neighborhood and the new restaurants and investments that are being made through the private sector. And then this Thursday, we kick off the 15th Annual Newport Beach Film Festival. Fifty thousand people come to our city from across Southern California, from across the nation, to enjoy great movies. And I hope that you'll take an opportunity to get out and see the best of your community and some of the best of modern cinema during the festival.
And I have three brief comments. Last week, I had the opportunity of speaking before the men's group at St. Andrew's Presbyterian Church, and they've been an organization in progress for 40 years, and most of the members have been there at every meeting. I also had the opportunity with Councilwoman Degel, Degel Gardner, thank you, and Hinn in attending the Cronodomar Townhouse, Town Hall meeting this last week. And hats off to the people of Cronodomar, who really have their act together in coordinating the activities of their Business Improvement District and their chamber and their Homeowners Association. It's always an important and a good event. And the last thing that I would like to do is I would like to encourage us to have at some future council meeting a presentation from staff and the police department on the status of the coyote issue that we are dealing with. It seems to be more of a topic all the time, and the limits under which we must operate by law, and those precautions that our citizens can take to help protect themselves in that, in that most important issue. And so with that, I'm going to ask if any one of the public would like to make any comment on any item that is not on our agenda at this point in time. And if there's anyone in the public that would like to do that, I would ask you to come down at this point in time.
Mayor, it's public comments on consent calendar at this time.
I'm actually backing up to the public comments, general public comments.
There is a point in the agenda that's number 17 for public comments on non-agenda items.
All right, well, I'm attempting to move that up to this point.
Okay.
Right, thank you. Is anybody that would like to make comments that are not on the agenda at this point in time?
Mayor Hill and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. Councilman Hinn just mentioned that the budget for the coming year was going to be released imminently, or at least alluded to that. City website says it will be coming out by Friday of this week. And for those who want some, a task much more daunting than trying to review hundreds and hundreds of pages of financial information, I also wanted to comment on something that Mayor Protem Selig mentioned at the last council meeting, which was the Land Use Element Amendment that is wending its way towards the November ballot, and this flyer that all the voters in Newport Beach received, which notifies us that we have until April 30th at 5:00 PM to submit written comments on what is called the Environmental Impact Report, telling us how this laundry list of new development in our city would impact the quality of our lives. Understanding and commenting on environmental impact reports is, like I said, a very challenging task for any ordinary citizen. And in most projects of this kind, we have the advantage of review by our expert environmental quality affairs committee. We also normally have a, the benefit of a study session held before the planning commission while the review period for the environmental impact report is still open. In this case, we have the benefit of neither of those, so us poor citizens are left to comment on our own by 5:00 PM on April 30th. And I just wanted to make, say that to me, this entire Land Use Element Amendment seems to be a kind of Newport Beach dividend on steroids, with the developers who knew to get in this particular line, including Irvine Company, having all the very substantial costs of entitlement and an election being borne by us, the taxpayers, rather than by themselves, as would normally be the case. I also have a problem with the concept of wrapping together into a single vote on the November ballot, as seems to be the plan, and as was done in 2006, changes to many different parts of the city. To show the advantages of retaining public records, before the study session, the city clerk was able to obtain to me from the city's vault somewhere, the sample ballot from 14 years ago, 2000, when the Green Light Initiative was passed by the voters of the city. And it's very clear to me from the arguments that were made in that, that the proposal to expand Newport Center, which involves the Irvine Company and a couple of other developers, and the separate thing at the airport, both of those need to be presented to the voters by themselves separately and not camouflaged by a number of other things. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to make a comment at this point in time, or something that's not on the agenda? Please come forth.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. Thank you for giving me this opportunity. I'm Gurpreet Singh Ahuja. I'm a pediatric, ear, nose and throat, head and neck surgeon at Chalk Children's Hospital. But today, I'm here in the capacity of a member of the Board of Directors of Orange County Human Relations Council, with which the city of Newport Beach has had a longstanding relationship. And I'm here to present to you the annual report of Orange County Human Relations Council and to give you a brief update of OC Human Relations activities over the past year. And I'll take this opportunity to share the reports with you. As our, as our demographics continue to change, some cities have struggled the past year with conflicts that grew into abusive and sometimes hateful speeches at public comments periods of some of the council meetings in Orange County, or led to public demonstrations which occurred when civility was often the first victim. OC Human Relations, in partnership with the Chairman of Board of Supervisors and Association of Cities, conducted a forum that has developed these practical guidelines for managing civility in public forums, and I'm going to share with you a copy of it. Our partnership with cities maintained the capacity to serve as an asset in healing these tense times and saved cities' tax dollars in the process. We build community by fostering respect, resolving conflict and pursuing equality. Many of our services are city, are countywide, but I would like to share the following data about some of our additional services that are specific to Newport Beach. We mediated 155 cases, as well as 12 family mediations in the community or in courts, where one of the parties was a resident of Newport Beach. In collaboration with Newport Beach Police on Hate Crimes and individuals or community groups on hate incidents which are not crimes, we documented seven hate crimes and one hate incident in Newport Beach in the year 2012. 5,200 Newport Beach youth participated in our Bridges Violence and Bullying Prevention Program. Five Newport Beach youth participated in the Summer Leadership Camp or in the year-long Human Relations Internship. Thirty-seven Newport Beach students participated in our Day Long Walk in My Shoes Program, which is held at UC Irvine, learning about respect, tolerance and making a difference in our schools and communities. We helped build a sense of community with Newport Beach residents and staff through the Hate Crime Victim Support Network. In conclusion, as we begin the 21st year of OC Human Relations Partnership with OC's cities, it is notable to recognize that in addition to these specific services we provided, that we provided Newport Beach this year, we also worked to maintain the capacity of OC Human Relations to assist when the human relations crisis hits. This year, our capacity was critical, and being able to, I'll give 30 more seconds, if I may. This year, our capacity was critical in being able to help residents to understand what many African-Americans, Sikhs and Muslims face in our neighborhoods on a daily basis through the listening sessions, and I've shared with you a couple of copies of the listening sessions. Help cities to rebuild police and immigrant community relations in the aftermath of something, of sometimes violent confrontations. Help Orange County cities collaborate to address the need for permanent supportive housing for the mentally ill, and multi-service homeless shelters to reduce the number of people living on the streets. And help city councils to maintain civility in public meetings while balancing the free speech rights of individuals with the desire to keep hate-free zones for the diverse members of the public. While cities may not have major conflicts every year, when the crisis hits, it can be enormously expensive to address in public safety, human suffering and reputation costs. Significant savings can be achieved if we have a strong human relations organization with significant capacity. And if at this point, I can, if I may, request the mayor to come and receive a certificate of recognition from OC Human Relations for...
While you're waiting for the mayor to come down, how many hate crimes there were in Orange County as a whole? Oh, okay, we'll have a look at that. Oh, okay, we'll have a look at that.
Is there anyone else in the public that would like to speak at this point in time? Please come on down.
No, how amazing. I think this --
Please, your name.
Oh, my name is Sharon Ray, Newport Heights resident. The local post office up there is important to us, and I understand you all are helping to keep that functional, and we appreciate it. Also should mention that your Belinda was able to hire a coyote specialist, a trapper, and it was enormously helpful. See, you might find out how they managed it. It is a problem. Thanks.
All right, thank you very much. Is there anyone else in the public who would like to speak? All right, then we'll move on to Consent Calendar.
Public comments are invited on Consent Calendar, items one through fourteen. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record. To the extent that any item is removed from the consent calendar by a council member, members of the public are invited to speak on each item for up to three minutes per item. All matters listed under Consent Calendar are considered to be routine and will all be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. Council members have received detailed staff reports of each of the items recommending an action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the city council votes on the motion unless members of the city council request specific items to be discussed and/or removed from the consent calendar for separate action.
Councilmember Hen, do you have any items to pull?
I do not.
Councilmember Curry.
I have no items to pull, but I would just note that we are approving today the construction of the long-delayed and needed-to-be-done restroom facilities in San Miguel Park, which will be an important improvement to those living in the port streets and using the park in District Seven.
Councilmember Gardner.
I have none.
Councilmember Petros.
I'd like to pull item three, please.
Councilmember Selig.
I have none.
And I have none to pull, but I would like to note my recusal on item number nine and on number five with potential properties within 500 feet of those two items.
Mr. Mayor, just that staff has one comment. Councilmember Gardner asked a question about fourteen, about why a number has a 489% change. It's actually supposed to be a 489% decrease. Apparently, that little negative sign was truncated. It involves the change in what we spent in the general fund and Tideland CIPs because as much as we did last period in dredging, especially with the lower bay, and buying the Rule 28 credit, so that's that change. So we'll hopefully make that correction to add that negative there. Thank you. Oh, and I'd just make a note, we do have some folks in the audience from Newport shores, and this item, item nine, is staying on consent, and I just, obviously, you're comfortable with that, and we thank you for coming down anyway in support of that, so I assume you are in support of it, so thanks.
And item number three, did we not have a request to --
I think Mr. Petros is going to cover that. Yeah.
Okay, for that. Ah, yes.
I didn't even know your name.
I'm taking a beating tonight. It's appropriate for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd move approval to Consent Calendar, items one through fourteen, with the exception of item number three, and noting a recusal by Mayor Hill on items number nine and number five.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
All right, all those in silver, please, please vote. Do we need --
On consent, public comments?
All right, I'm sorry. Is there anyone that would like to speak on the consent calendar items, remaining on the consent calendar? Items one through fourteen, with the exception of three.
Mayor Hill and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. I just wanted to comment briefly on item number fourteen, which is the quarterly business report. The city manager just mentioned something about it. What I wanted to mention or highlight is in it, it's slightly late, but it calls attention in the financial report to a document called the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report for the City. You're about to launch into the budget cycle, which is anticipated expenditures and revenues. This is actually the annual report, fairly lengthy also, but actually interesting to read, that gives the audited revenues and expenses for the city for the fiscal year that ended last June 30th, and I think it's a quite important document. I haven't heard it mentioned here at the city council meetings that I can recall before. Quarterly Business Report does call attention to it, and I think it should be more widely known. I believe the city actually gets an award usually for its preparation. Public should know about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else that would like to speak on items remaining on the consent calendar? Seeing none, then I would ask council to vote.
The motion carries unanimously, six-zero, with Councilmember Daigle absent.
Item number three, Councilman Petros.
Mayor Hill, while I am still troubled by the application that is before us on this general plan amendment, I have been approached by a new representative for the applicant who came to me with an olive branch to suggest that they would like to continue collaborating with the city on resolving the issues related to the 191 Riverside Avenue address. And so what I would like to do is to rescind my motion for denial and seek a motion to continue this item to the May 27th meeting. I offer that because that is the date that the applicant, the one who is responsible for their application, that they see that they can achieve the goals that would be set before them, to put together an application that's meaningful and has merit to be considered by this council. Having said that, and understanding that it is the applicant's move here, there are certain things that I would like to see and that I would hope I could gain the support of my colleagues on that. The first and foremost is that by that time, I am hopeful that there is some understanding and disposition of the post office in its current or neighborly location, that there's some disposition to that, that a concept be presented by the applicant as to what would happen to the property under the general plan amendment request being put forth. Understanding it's a concept, it is not a project approval, it is something that could occur. Given that that concept would be presented, I would like our staff to evaluate that concept in terms of how close it resembles the intensities and densities of the general plan amendment and zone change requested. So if the concept is less than that general plan, what would it need, you know, what would be the maximums? I would like our staff to review the SEQA findings and confirm or modify any findings of the negative declaration relative to that general plan amendment. And in particular, being the traffic geek that I am, the general plan analysis of the roadways in the area. I understand that this might not rise to a TPO-level analysis. However, there is a marginal increase as a result of this to the general plan, and I would like to know what that marginal increase does to the critical intersection of Riverside and Coast Highway. I'm also concerned about the building heights, parking, and circulation, but again, those are project-specific items. And as much Ms. Brandt as you can get your arms around that, in a conceptual level, I think that that would be helpful. With that as my umbrella, I would offer that as a motion to continue this item to the May 27th council meeting.
I'm a little confused. By May 27th, we're going to have all that work done, even though, you know, what things have to happen first? They have to have the post office thing solved, because I don't want to put staff through if we all know we're going to turn it down immediately.
This is an applicant presented by a private entity? That private entity believes that they can have this done by the 27th? I'm not certain that they can. And if at that time, on May 27th, our staff comes back and says, "No, all of those items are not prepared," then I would offer to continue it again, or I would hope that the applicant would understand that that time would have to go forward. But they're the ones who are putting this before them. I'm saying what I'd like to see in that time.
Haf, do you have a comment on that?
Thank you, Mayor Hill, and Councilmembers Petros. I think that once we review the information as requested by, presuming that it's requested by the city council, we'll be able to make the determination whether we can come back at the requested continuance date. You can continue to that date, and then, again, if we're unable to have a recommendation at that time, we can request another continuance. And also, if there's what I would call a substantial change to the SEQA analysis or the findings, we may want to consider sending it back to the planning commission for their additional review and recommendation. So I think it really is, the ball's back in the court of the applicant to see what they want to provide to the city, and then we'll decide the best way to process it.
All right. Is there a second for that motion?
I'll second the motion.
All right, any further council discussion?
Well, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Well, a couple of things. We were asked by the applicant to approve his zone change and his use change in the context of the post office moving out. He still has a landlord-tenant relationship with the post office, and that is going to be what it's going to be. Hopefully, he'll play a constructive role in resolving that issue. By not disapproving it, there are some procedural benefits that we're giving him to come back without additional fees and time delays and that kind of thing with an actual plan. I just would certainly hope that he actually spends that time in talking with the neighbors and the affected businesses next to him and actual human beings to find a plan that is consistent and compatible with the neighborhood and the neighboring businesses and the residences before bringing this back to the city council. And I'm not sure he can do that by the 27th of May, but we may want to, you know, continue it again after that to make sure that that process is fully vetted.
Councilmember Curry, I couldn't agree with you more. That is a very engaged neighborhood, and that's something that should occur.
Any further? I would ask if there's anyone in the audience who would like to comment on this, so please come forward.
Mayor Hill and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. I submitted a written comment urging you to stay the course and keep this property zoned as a public facility, as the public apparently wants it to be. In that written comment, part of my argument was I assumed that the applicant or landowner, when they bought this property, knew what they were buying. At the time I wrote that yesterday, I didn't know for sure if that was true or not, and I wanted to let you know for your information and consideration in continuing this item. Before the study session, I checked at the public terminals that are available in the planning division to see what the ownership of this property was. And the entity Mariners Center, actually Mariners Center M2 LLC, does seem to be the property owner, and they have owned this property barely a year and a half. The city record, if it's accurate, says that it was transferred on August 31st, 2012. The building itself was constructed, apparently, in 1956, which perhaps predates any general plan. Or I don't know what the designation was at that time, but when this entity bought it on August 31st, 2012, and I assume they are very sophisticated buyers, they knew what they were buying. Thank you.
Anybody else in the public like to comment on this item? Seeing, please come down. Anyone else that would like to comment on this as well? If so, I'd ask you to come down and sit in the front row and be prepared.
Evening, Honorable Mayor and councilmembers. I just --
Your name, please.
Jeremy Mal.
Thank you.
I work at the restaurant across the street from the post office, and I know the public wants to keep the post office. My primary concern as a citizen of Newport Beach is that if the zoning change request is simply denied without prejudice, the actual change is open to repeated reapplications that can wear down the neighborhood's ability to fight back each time a reapplication or small change is made. Not to mention, reapplications will waste your valuable time and taxpayer resources. As we see here, you guys are, it's being continuated, and I don't know how many times this is going to happen. So therefore, if I recommend, or I would ask that, if the landlord is not able to make a decent proposal by May 27th, or whenever you continue it to, that you consider denying the proposed amendment with prejudice so that our city can rest assured that no more time or resources will be wasted on the issue for a year.
Thank you very much. All right. Any further public comment on this item? Then I bring it back to the council and ask you to please vote.
I hope he doesn't say.
The motion carries unanimously, six-zero.
All right, thank you. At this point in time, we'll move to oral reports from city council members on committee activities. Councilman Hen.
I have one committee meeting to report on. It's the Balboa Village Advisory Committee meeting that was held on Wednesday, April the ninth. We had a very good discussion in terms of updating our view of maintenance in Balboa Village, the conclusion of which was to see if we can find a way to significantly increase the maintenance standard for the village. And we'll be following up with staff to have a closer look at that and hopefully to put together some specific recommendations that will be actionable in the budget beginning July 1 for next year. And then we also looked at options for moving forward with the facade improvement program that's a part of the master plan recommendations for Balboa Village, and had a good discussion on that, and we'll be coming back with some specific recommendations on that, too. So another good meeting, another step along the road here of revitalizing Balboa Village.
Councilmember Curry.
For the past year now, it's been my privilege to serve as the president of the Association of California Cities of Orange County, and I was relieved to be able to pass the leadership of the organization over to my good friend and colleague Frank Curry from Mission Viejo last week and to celebrate a very successful year with the association.
Thank you. Councilwoman Gardner.
Yes, as Chair of the Environmental Quality Affairs Committee, I'd like to call a meeting of it, but the EQUAC meets only at the will of the council, so would you put that on the agenda for the next meeting to see if the council would support that? Thank you.
Councilwoman Petros.
I have no reports.
Councilwoman Selig.
The Land Use Element Committee, although we've completed our work and are having no committee meetings, staff is continuing to make presentations to the community on the Land Use Element. One was done on April the 10th in our community room, which had a modest turnout. And then last week, they did a presentation to the Cronodoma Residents Association, which had a much broader turnout for that meeting. And then, on May the 14th, Speak Up Newport will be having a program where that'll be printed, presented there also. And then tomorrow, the Local Coastal Plan Committee will be meeting at 12:30 PM in the Newport Coast Room, and the main item on the agenda is a review of the harbor regulations that may be included in the local coastal implementation plan.
Thank you. At this point in time, we'll move in --
Mr. Mayor, before you go any further, I'm trying to squeeze in an announcement, too. This is about the West Newport Community Center. As your council knows and as the community knows, we're looking at two potential sites over in West Newport. We want to hear what the residents think about those. That was the charge that you gave us. The first site's the end of West 16th Street near Monrovia. The other side is Superior and Coast Highway, so we'd appreciate your thoughts. There are two ways, there are a few ways that people can share their ideas with us. One is there's a workshop planned for Monday, May 12th at 6:00 PM, Monday, May 12th at 6:00 PM, at the old city council chambers at 3,300 Newport Boulevard. Secondarily, we're using a new interactive online tool called, we're calling it Connect Newport Beach. You can access it from our website. There'll be a button to click on. That's an opportunity for people to just kind of voice their thoughts in a kind of a GIS-oriented way. We're going to give this a try. And then, thirdly, you could always call Steve to my left here, 644-3001. Thank you.
Thank you.
What was the time of the May 12th meeting?
6:00 PM, again, the old council chambers.
We'll move into our public hearing items. Item number 15, please. Staff report?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Hill. I'm Kimberly Brant, your community development director. And the next two items are related but distinctly different, and they have to do with the city's community block grant funds that it receives on an annual basis from the federal government, specifically the Department of Housing and Urban Development. The first public hearing has to do with the city's five-year plan, which is called the consolidated plan, and it's a necessary document that the city has to prepare every five years and then review on an annual basis to make sure that it's keeping pace with the projections that's kept within that document. 2014 is the close of the reporting period for the current consolidated plan, and staff is recommending a substantial amendment to that document. And we do have our consultant Clint Whited here from LDM, who can provide the city council with a brief overview of the proposed amendment. And the second public hearing item is related to the actual service grants that are associated with our annual CDBG funds, and there is recommendations as to the, how much of the various service providers and the allocation for the next fiscal year. So with that, I'll go ahead and invite Clint to come to the podium to give an overview on the substantial amendment portion of our evening agenda.
Thank you very much. Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. The substantial amendment to the five-year consolidated plan is necessary to amend our five-year goals to reflect performance through the first four years worth of action plans during that time. The current five-year goals were developed in 2009 and 2010. They're really a forecast of what we thought would happen in housing and community development using CDBG funds. Over the course of the last four years, we've noticed that our performance isn't necessarily quite in line with the goals, and in order to have our reports more readily accepted by HUD, and in turn HUD's reports more readily accepted by Congress, we've recommended an increase to five out of the 12 goals, a decrease to six out of the 12 goals, and no change to one. Included in the staff report, there were a number of, there was a table that took us through the different goals, and if you have any specific questions about that, I'm prepared to answer them.
Are we served talking about these together? Or do you want us to talk about one at a time? Because I just have one question.
I think it would be preferable to, at this point, to take comments on the substantial amendment to the plan because it is apart from the service awards.
Any questions? We've all had an opportunity to look at the amendments. It looks like you're home free.
Sure.
Are there, is there anyone from the audience that would like to comment on this agenda item number 15? If so, please come forward. Seeing no one, I'd bring it back to the council for... I'll move the item. All right, it's been moved to second. Please vote.
The motion carries unanimously six-zero.
Item 16. Staff report, please.
Thank you again, Mayor Hill. So the second portion of the agenda is related to the annual award of the service portion of our CDBG allocation from the federal government. And again, I'll introduce Clint Whited to give an overview of our evaluation process and our recommendations to the city council.
Thank you very much. The 2014-15 action plan is the fifth of our five-year consolidated plan, and the action plan allocates this year $366,000 of federal community development block grant program funds to eligible activities under one of the 12 different consolidated plan goals that we just discussed. On December 19, 2013, we published a notice of funding availability in the paper, and we also reached out to all nonprofit organizations that expressed interest in applying for CDBG funds. As a result of that process, 11 nonprofit organizations submitted applications for the service grants as well as for the fair housing services that were required to provide. HUD requires those services to be provided as a condition of receiving the grant. Of those 11 responses, staff met and is recommending funding for seven of the service agencies. We're also recommending funding for an installment payment on our Section 108 loan that was used for the pedestrian improvements in Balboa Village, as well as for program administration. If you have any questions about the draft action plan and the funding recommendations, I'm prepared to take those.
All right. Councilwoman Gardner?
I just had one question on attachment CC3, which is page 406. There's a footnote that says $83,000 is unallocated for, because we didn't have enough for an impactful capital improvement project. Does that half be used for capital improvement? Can it be shifted to something else?
It does need to be used in the capital improvement realm. In terms of funding limitations, we're limited for the grant 20% administration and fair housing, 15% service.
So what it says, public services, you can't go over 15% then?
We were capped at $55,000 this year, and we received approximately $35,000 worth of applications, more than we could afford.
Okay. I just want to know if it was very fixed and by the book.
Certainly, and that $83,000 will come back to council as part of the next action plan, hopefully with a little more money so that perhaps the city could entertain a project that would be eligible for that use.
I had a quick question. Did I read correctly that we're now at the last installment on those, on that loan?
Unfortunately, we're not at the last installment. We are about eight years out. We make two installments per year. This year, it adds up to $202,000 of CDBG funds. The important thing to note is that the general fund is not impacted by that loan and that CDBG funds are paying that off principal and interest in full.
Eight more years to go.
Yes, sir.
Any further council questions?
Just to note that while the CDBG program has built into it because of federal requirements a fair amount of overhead and process requirements, it is nonetheless the way that we fund some very important public services, including our home-delivered meals program. If anyone's ever done the Meals on Wheels delivery, which I've done each year when I was mayor, it's one of the most satisfying and one of the most important things that we do for our elderly population in the city, and certainly very much appreciated, along with youth employment services and some other transitional services, some other very, very important social services that help knit the fabric of our community together. And I think they're very, they do a very good job.
I've always been a little bit critical of the administrative costs, but when I look at the amount of paper that you have to go through, I understand why it gets a little expensive.
All right. Seeing no further questions, I'd like to open it up for public comment. Is there anyone in the public that would like to comment on item number 16? Please come on down.
Good evening. My name is Gillian Miller. I am from Families Forward, one of the social services organizations that you all support. I just wanted to come and say thank you for the ongoing support that Newport Beach has been giving our organization. This year, you'll be supporting our transitional housing program again. All of the families that come to Families Forward for the transitional housing program are either extremely low income or low income, so these services are extremely important in getting them back on their feet. And so you know, in our last fiscal year, 100% of the families that graduated this program are now stably housed and are on their feet. So it's a large part thanks to you guys, and we really appreciate it. And I just wanted to let you know a couple of things going on with us. We're really proud to note that in the, this past year, Charity Navigator awarded us the top four-star rating for efficiency, and that gives us four years in a row with four stars, placing us in the top 6% of charities nationwide. 87% of our funds go directly to program. So we have to, a lot of thanks goes to our in-kind donors and our volunteers who allow us to be so nimble and be able to provide direct program in that broad aspect. And also for your community members, on May 3, we have a community resource fair coming up, and it brings together the whole community, organizations from across the county, allowing for people to sign up for services, receive services. There are a lot of activities for kids, and it's free to the public, so it'll be held at Irvine Valley College. If any of you need more information or want to pass that along to your constituents, I would be happy to give it to you. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to ask, answer.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Thank you. All right.
I thought it was interesting that, and I forget which category it was, but that there is, there's funding for rent. So when you receive an eviction notice, you can have an emergency payment, and that seems to me so wise. If we can keep people from getting to that point, keep them in their homes while we make that, whatever transitions we need to make, that's much better than having to get them out of their cars and try to find them homes again.
Any further public comments? Bring it back to the council, then. Do we have a motion on the floor? Move the item.
Second.
All right, please vote.
The motion carries unanimously six-zero.
Thank you. Motion for reconsideration.
A motion to reconsider the vote on any action taken by the city council at either this meeting or the previous meeting may be made only by one of the council members who voted with the prevailing side.
Any motions for reconsideration? Thank you. Then at this point in time, we will move to adjournment. Tonight, we are adjourning in memory of Ray Zartler, and Councilman Selig has some comments to make with respect to that.
Thank you, Mayor. A good friend of many members of past and present city council members, Ray M.J. Zartler, passed away at our last, on the day of our last council meeting, April the 8th. You see, Ray was a fixture of our city because he was treasurer for a number of council candidates and council members, including myself, also past council members Jan DeBay, Gary Adams, Don Webb, current council member Nancy Gardner, and Leslie Daigle, candidates Bob Wynn, Mike Cransley, and Dolores Otting. And I'm sure I didn't get all of them because he was quite active in that area. Ray was 85 years old. He was born in Chicago, Illinois. He served in the Korean War in, from 1950 to 1952. He graduated from the Illinois Institute of Technology with the Bachelor's of Science in Mechanical Engineering. Ray moved to Newport Beach in 1974. He became a real estate broker in 1985. In 1990, he became president of the Newport Mesa Association of Realtors. Ray had a keen interest in civic affairs and local politics. I know that when I'd go over to his house to sign the numerous forms we have to file with the state as council candidates and council members, or to do other business for my committee, that he would always engage me at least 20 minutes to half hour of conversation on city politics. He was never shy to express his opinions on things and tell me whether I was doing a good job or not. I don't know about the rest of you, but I got good marks. He attended all the Speak Up Newport programs. He was active there. He served on EQUAC. He helped on the Corona Del Mar 5K. He was an active member of our community. Ray is survived by his seven children and five grandchildren and his sister. He's also survived by his wife, Pat, her two children, and two grandchildren. Ray was a class act, and he will be missed.
He was my treasurer, and I didn't even, when they said, oh, you should get Ray Zartler for your treasurer, I went, what do I, you know what? I didn't know you needed such a thing. And every form that ever came in, I didn't have to worry about it. He would call me in plenty of time to get it in. It was just, it was wonderful to work with someone who was just so professional, so dedicated to getting everything right. And not just Speak Up Newport, but I don't think I would go to a public event involving the city, but he and his wife weren't there. So yes, he will be very much missed.
I believe we have some members of his family in the audience with us this evening. Thank you for being here. All right, with that, we stand adjourned.